Hello and welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley. Today, we are joined by founder of Get Oiling Greg Kilwin. Hey Greg.
Hello everyone. We're glad you're here.
Also joined by us today are the amazing Colin and Julie on our team. What's up you guys? Happy to see you.
Hello.
Everybody.
And of course, all of you here today, let us know where you're coming in from. We're excited to see you and hear from you. We're going to be talking about wish lists and Young Living today, and specifically how we can use those wish lists with your Get Oiling account for easy sharing. And kind of sharing on autopilot. For those of you who want to be able to just say, hey, go to my website and check out this link. This is going to be a really cool thing for you to use. So I hope you are ready to learn. Maybe just a quick show of hands. Who here is using as you're coming in? Who here is using wish lists? Are you using wish lists for Young Living yet? Definitely check this out if you haven't. And let us know where you're coming in from as you are. Hello, Missouri, Vermont, New Jersey, Arizona. We got some yes, loving them, not yet. Awesome. So continue, come on in, let us know where you are. We're excited to see you. I do have some slides that we're going to get into today, just to preserve privacy in Young Living, you know, accounts. So I've got some screenshots that I'll actually show you that demonstrate sort of how these things work. We're going to get into some ideas about how you could build these, and then of course, how you can use them with your Get Oiling site. So yeah, you will feel more competent about using these by the close of our call here today. I do have some, I have some screenshots where I actually show how they're created inside of your Get, your Young Living account rather. So that you can really feel good about getting these things set up. And we'll talk about some ideas around, you know, how we decide what goes on to them. Because basically what these are, are a really cool tool for you to bundle your sharing. Instead of saying, you know, oh, we should really talk about thieves' household cleaner. Maybe you want them to also know that there is a scrub and that there is a veggie wash, right? And you don't want to have to go and create individual links for every single one of those things when you typically recommend them together. Right? So you've got a way to really just grab all that stuff all in one. And then you can send it out. And this is a free feature with your Young Living account. This is not something that you have to pay any additional money for. You can create these and use these right away. So if you're brand new, maybe you're not even using Get Oiling yet, be using these wishlist features to start building product lists and, and you know, routines and things like that, which are some of the things I'm going to share with you guys today. That'll make your sharing easier and more streamlined. And generally speaking, when you're presenting an opportunity to somebody who is open. And you give them an opportunity to quickly and easily purchase or put into their cart several things that you say work well together. And it's something they're new to, people will generally take that recommendation and purchase more stuff. And that's why this wishlist is such a really cool tool for increasing your volume of sales and getting people exposed to more products. So awesome. All right. Well, let's go ahead and get into our slides. I think we've got, got a good, good group of people here. Of course, the folks keep coming in. We welcome you. We're excited to have you. And yeah, let's go ahead and get into our presentation for today. By the way, if you do have questions here, if you are, whether it's about what we're talking about here, oops, on the slides. Or if you have questions about anything else, please do put that into the Q and A. This is a live call that is designed to be an opportunity for us to work together. Right? So this is a great chance. If you really feel like you need to see something, if you're a visual learner, if you feel like you kind of need some handholding or a new perspective on trying to solve a problem or figure out a thing that you're trying to get done in your business, this is your chance. And don't be shy. We're here to help you. All right. So today, we're going to talk about how we can share easily with Young Living wishlist. And use Get Oiling to really maximize this amazing tool. So what we'll talk about today are wish lists, so what they are and how they work. We'll talk about how to use them with Get Oiling. And then of course, we're here to help you on this call. So again, please do make sure that you're putting your questions into the Q and A. Our chat can get a little busy. So make sure that you add those there so we don't miss them. And if you are watching this in the future as a replay, you can get on the list to join these calls live. It's getoiling.com/weeklyworksession. This is a Team Y L call. This isn't exclusive to any group or even paid Get Oiling members. Anyone can join this call and benefit from what we teach every Thursday. So feel free to invite your friends and your teams who you feel make benefit. And if you'd like to work together one-on-one, if you're just trying to navigate what your next step is, or you feel like you're stuck on something, go to getoiling.com/websitereview. We can get together on a call just like this one. You can schedule it in advance so that you know that that's your dedicated time. And of course, we can have a chance to look at your work ahead of time and maybe solve more complicated problems. But in a one-on-one setting, you can get my eyes on your work and we can work together here on our call. All right. So did we show our hands? How many of us are using wish lists? Pop your hand up for me real quick. I'm curious of the, the folks who are here. How many of us are actually using this feature? It's relatively new with Young Living here in, in North America. And I'm not, I'm not 100% sure on its rollout to other markets. But I do know that, you know, the, the direction here is obviously to start streamlining toward this new way with the changes that have launched with Young Living here since this past year. So wishlist, if you don't have access to them yet, get excited because once they're available, you're going to know exactly what to do. But if you do have access to them, oh boy, let's have some fun with this today. So Young Living wishlist are basically a way for you to create a list of your favorite products for yourself. So let's just say for instance, you have, we all, very few of us have the exact same essential rewards order every single month, right? Or sorry, loyalty rewards order. Very few of us have the exact same thing every single month, right? We switch things out. So how do you maybe decide what goes into your month, your one month? Or what goes into another month? Or maybe you, you know, have a particular goal that you're working on. And so you're kind of building up a wishlist of things that you know that you maybe want to add to a future order. That's really great for your own use case like that. Excuse me, but you also have the ability to give these wishlist a way to share these wishlist with your prospective customers. Or your actual customers and give them sort of a cheat code, a cheat sheet to actually find exactly the things that you recommend. And even to add them all to cart at the same time. And you do have the option from these wishlist to add to cart or create a loyalty order. Those buttons are there. And what you have when you create this and you decide to share it is you have this unique to you link that makes it so that whoever uses that link to buy is going to become your new Young Living customer. So the link actually has a code that, that generates onto the end of it that includes the sponsor and enroller number of your choice. So this does become unique to you. And wherever it is shared, whether they purchase one product or all of them, that becomes your new customer, right? And the really cool thing about this is that you can create a lot of these. Okay. So you can actually, if you're logged into your Young Living account, either from the menu, my account menu, or if you're in your account, you can actually see on a desktop over on the left-hand side, this menu list. Wishlists is what you're looking for. And then of course, you can create new or see any existing lists that you have. And you can actually see that I've got a bunch of lists right here that we're going to be going over today. So you can create a new list by simply clicking new list. It's going to pop up new wishlist and, and of course, here you're going to name it and then create the list. Now, once you've created that list, there is a search bar over here to the right, under the title of your new list, where you can start searching for the products that you want to add to your list. All right. So you do want to know what the products are that you want to use and you want to know what you want to name the list, of course. And so what happens here is when you decide to share, so you've got your list created, you click the share button. You have a pop-up here that says share wishlist, where you can put a sponsor and enroller number. They let you edit this, you guys. So if you're trying to build under certain legs, you can do that, right? If you're, if you're trying to build under someone, if that's a goal or a plan that you have, you can do that here. So you're, it's automatically going to populate your Young Living member number as a sponsor and enroller. But you can change those, you can modify those. And then finally, over here, it will show that the link is generated. And then you're going to see the link show up. Now it's whited out, of course. It's going to have the actual enroller ID, sponsor ID, wishlist ID, and then a username, which cool thing is editable, actually, where it says username, you can actually change the name on that link once you save it. Anyway, so what I want you to do is for the wishlist that you create, I want you to copy this link that Young Living is going to give you when you go to share this wishlist and add them to your notes app or to a spreadsheet. You want to have these handy where we can easily go and pop them into your Get Oiling account. Because once we get them into your Get Oiling and the various places you could put them, they're there. And you don't have to go back and generate a new link here from Young Living. So Rebecca, it doesn't change the username, like it doesn't change anything other than how it shows up. I'll show you that actually when we demonstrate how this works. When you have a published wishlist, it'll say so-and-so's wishlist and it just changes that name. That's literally it. So you can actually see here and it's, it's whited out. But if you change the name, it'll show up for whoever's name that might be. Now, this is what it looks like for the person who clicks your link. Okay? So this is the oily bedtime routine wishlist that's created from this account. And, and you do have to sign out. If you want to see what they'll see, the way they see it, make sure you're signed out. Because it's not going to let you see your own wishlist like a lead would see your wishlist. So sign out of your Young Living account and then you can actually click and see what this looks like. All right. So our first mission is to create our wishlist. So if you need help with ideas for what to put on your wishlist, always first start with your own product knowledge. What is your hero product? You know, what are, what are complimentary products to your hero product? What are the things that you use every day? I really recommend thinking about routines and sort of how you oil things together. So maybe first thing in the morning, you have a few roller bottles that you use that are for different purposes, right? Maybe you do a couple for your adrenals, but you also go ahead and take care of a couple of other things. Maybe you've got a great day protocol or something like that that you use, right? So you can use your own knowledge and routines. Also, great thing you can do here, I'm thinking very specifically of like the Supplements Desk reference. You can actually create wishlist that include products from protocols that are published in different oily resources. Right? That could be a really cool thing to do. You can also, if there are product challenges, I know that there, there was, what was it? It was like an adrenal challenge or something that I saw recently that had sulfur zyme and Endoflex and Nutmeg maybe. And, and maybe some Ningsha. And then it was used in a particular way. Bundle those things together, right? And now when you're promoting the use of a challenge or something like that, people can just add everything that they need for that challenge right into their cart. And then, oh my word, it's so easy to know what to share and how to set this up if you're using partner content. So the example that I'm sharing with you guys today is from our friends at Grow Workspace. It's their daily routine for living clean. And so if you are a Grow Workspace member and you have access to this, highly recommend that you check it out. This particular one, I'm showing you here in the center is a slide for this, set the tone for the day. And that is the morning routine that I've created over here in the wishlist, where we have all of these things they recommend. From Lemon Vitality all the way through to Envision, they're all on this list. Pretty, pretty cool, right? Now they have, as you can see, morning workout, getting ready in the morning, makeup, work time, lunchtime, afternoon pick-me-up, oily dinner, bedtime routine. These are all included in this particular bundle from Grow Workspace. And they all literally have a slide like this that has a list of products that are recommended. So you could, you know, maybe in the email, for instance, that they include with this bundle, go in and say, if you'd like to add all of these to your cart right now, click here and you're adding that wishlist link. Right? And I'll literally show you how to do that here at the close of the presentation here today. So once we've got our wishlist links sorted out, now we want to talk about how we plug them into your Get Oiling system. So let's talk about some places that we can put these links in your Good Oiling system. First, you should know, the sky's kind of the limit here. Literally anywhere you can input text on your Good Oiling site and you can link it. You can add these, right? You can add a link to your wishlist from anywhere, basically you can type in your system. So that can be in your emails, your text pages, blog posts, inside your vaults, really wherever you want this to show up, you can show up. You could also, if you have a, maybe you have like a, just your, you have one wishlist. And you're like, hey, you know what? For everybody who's getting started with Young Living, I believe 100%, these are the things that you're going to want to start with. And so you create a wishlist that has those items, right? And you could simply create a link on your Good Oiling site using this URL shortening feature that we have that I will show you guys here in a second. And you can just basically have it say yourwebsite.com/list or forward slash wishlist or, or forward slash must-have or something like that, right? And so now you don't even have to remember where you put the Young Living wishlist link. It is an easily rememberable, easily shareable redirect on your website. Another great thing you can do, and we actually talked about this in last week's training, is use a my favorite things page where you showcase your favorite products, right? And of course, the link that you can use from that my favorite things page can be your wishlist link, right? So you can maybe have like, here's a category of my favorite things for a great morning, right? And we have maybe pictures of the products and so on and so forth. And then the wishlist link is what we use to, to say, hey, if you want to check all of these out and maybe even add them all to your cart, click here. Right? And so you could add like the actual link that you're using on your favorite things page. You can use your wishlist link for. And then of course, you want to have that favorite things page with these wishlist links on your link in bio, right? I wouldn't add your, your wishlist links to your link in bio directly as a link. I would add some context, right? Because people are going to want to buy from you based on your story, based on who you are, why they trust you, right? And so if you're using my favorite things page, you can say, I love Ningsha because, or I love Endoflex because. And they're going to feel much more strongly about paying the price on the page and taking out their card and actually making the purchase. So be sure to leverage that favorite things page and then add that to your link in bio. So that when you're on Insta, for instance, you could say, click the link in bio, go to my favorite things. And you can learn more about this thing I'm talking about here, right? You could also use these wishlist links to add to your Why Young Living page. If you have taken the Brand My Business workshop, you have a Why Young Living page on your website where we point off to different themes in the Get Oiling system. You can also include my favorite things from Young Living on this page. And then of course, send them off to those wishlist where you could say, you know, get started with my favorite bundles. And then you can talk about them and of course, have the links to these wishlist. Another thing you can do, and I'm going to show you guys how to do this, is to add this link to your campaign messages wherever product is referenced. Now I'm going to show you from that daily routine from Living Clean, from Grow Workspace, how we can actually go and incorporate those specific links. We could also link our wishlist in blog posts and Get Oiling. So if you're writing a blog post and you're talking about a morning protocol, you can say, hey, if you'd like to learn more about these items or, or buy them all, you can click here, right? And now you can send that off just like an affiliate, right? You would be treating, like this is kind of the amazing thing about this wishlist feature. You get to treat sharing Young Living, if you choose in this way, like an affiliate marketer would, right? Like the bloggers who, you know, earn income by sharing links to Amazon products. You can do the same thing with Young Living. And the wishlist is a really cool way to do more than just talk about one product at a time. You can use the leaf link feature and Get Oiling to create a unique link that goes to any Young Living product that'll have your code attached to it whenever you want to. But if you're going to go through the trouble and send somebody to your Young Living website to purchase, why not send them with recommendations for five more things to add to their cart? Why not sell five more things if you're going to promote one, right? So definitely use this for that purpose. And then finally, you can add these wishlist links to vaults, which would be like classes inside of your vaults or pages inside of your vaults, really anywhere product is mentioned. And you want to give somebody a call to action to go and learn more and, and add to cart. All right. So where do you want to put them? Let us know. And we're going to go and take a look at the different ways we can start adding these to our Get Oiling system. So give me real quick. I'm going to get out of here real quick. Let me answer a couple of these questions. The wishlist works, how does it look? Okay. So you didn't just see that. I hope you saw that Rebecca. They do not need to set up an account first in order to see it, right? Anybody could see it. If they want to add something to cart, when they check out, they have to become a member. And that's when they become your member. If they create a subscription order, they again have to create an account and they become your member. So that's what that looks like. And it is kind of non-consequential with changing the username. If you're, this would be useful to you, for instance, if you signed up for Young Living as a business, like your LLC name. But you wanted to make sure that when people actually land on the wishlist, they see your actual first name. That's, that's what that would mean. It's not something that you have to do. Okay, Margaret, would they have to have their own Young Living account to see the wishlist? Nope, nope, nope. They can see it immediately, but they have to become a member to of course, be able to purchase and they become your member. You've got a lot of favorite bundles Rebecca. Awesome. Um, I, I were not in touch with, not in touch with the Young Living corporate about this, so can't really answer specifically. I know that when I went and create and created all of these different bundles today, I was kind of wondering like, when are they going to cut me off? But they didn't. So we have, I think, you know, seven wishlist or something like that, that was just created this morning. So I don't know what the limit is on those. But it is, it is free and included with your account. So it's pretty cool. All right. So I'm going to go into, I believe I'm already in Jane's account. I'm going to show you guys. Couple of places we can go. So one of the things I just saw is somebody wanted to see, how do we create like a pretty link? So let me pull up over here. You guys can't see this, but I'm doing it right now. I have a morning routine link, so I'm going to copy it. And actually, I'm going to click it and show you guys what it looks like. Here we go. So morning routine. And you see, I put Jane's name in there, right? It doesn't change anything other than just it shows this, but the morning routine, that's all there. So this is what it's going to look like for somebody who has not signed up, right? So I'm going to take this link, which I've already saved. And we're going to go over to, where am I dashboard? Okay. We're going to go over here to pages. And we're going to create a redirect. And we do have a help article about this, I believe. But all we have to do is go to create page, create a blank page. You don't have to put anything on this page. Nobody is actually going to see this. We're going to go to settings. I'm going to call this morning routine. All one word, because I want to be able to speak it out and for it to be, I can go to, go to mywebsite.com/morningroutine to get the shopping list, right? Now, under advanced, auto forward to URL. Paste that in. Perfect. And then it's available by link only. Going to hit done and save. So now if I go to getoiling.com/janelle, and that's her website, and then I go to morning routine. That is going to redirect us if I didn't do it correctly. What did I do wrong? Let's see. That's there. Auto forward to URL. Did I do something wrong here? Done.
Lux, right?
Yeah. If I go to view here, yeah, it's going to take a straight over. So I think I just didn't save it, you guys. Silly me. Okay. So I was a little ahead of myself. Jane L. Morning routine. Voila. And that's. Anyway, so what you're going to do from your list, going back over to our dashboard here. If I type in the word morning. Here's the custom page. All I have to do is click view. That's our link, right? Or what we could do is go to our, our pages list and type in warning. And this is our redirect over to that wishlist, right? So all you have to do is just grab this link. You could also, let's just say for instance, maybe you were in Grow Workspace and you chose a daily routine for living clean, right? Which you should definitely do if you have this. And maybe you got the resource bundle from them, which looks like this. Right? Where you've got a whole lot of really cool features. I already claimed this. So let me actually go over here to my claims. All right. So there's our daily routine for living clean. All right. So here's the email campaign. And here's day one. So it's already written. It's got all this great information. Here we go. Set the tone for the day. What I want to do here is just hit enter a couple of times underneath the image. I'm going to center it. I'm going to italicize it. Want, how about want a shopping list for this routine? Click here. Right? And actually, what I want to do is turn this into a link. And now I'm going to go in here and search for morning routine. Because I have that in my system already, right? I don't even have to go and copy it from another page. So there's morning routine. I'm going to type click here. Open a new tab and insert. Right? So that's done. So that's actually like a double sort of cheat code there. So if you're creating that shortcut link for yourself, it's now something that you can pull into your links directly. So you don't have to go and get it from somewhere else. But let's show you another one with what that looks like here. Here's another one for an oily workout routine. I want to use the same formatting here. So I'll just copy this guy. And scroll down. Center it and paste. And then I'm going to edit this link because I want to go and get my workout routine. So I've got that in another window. So I'm going to copy that, paste it, click update, and there we go. Right? So we can do this and, and of course, repeat for everything that's shared there. And of course, if you've got all of those wishlist created for this particular Grow Workspace bundle, then you are able to go in and, and make those modifications. Let me see, what are some other ways that we can connect here? Let's go to the my favorite things page that we created last week. Let me see. Here we go. My favorite things. So this is actually something we talked about last week where you can go in and create a, a favorite things page that you could share. Of course, what you would want to do is, is have some kind of an image that you put together, maybe use Canva for this. I have, I have seen a cool little cheat code for this as well. If you have the Life Steps app, if you want to replicate some of the bundles that they put together there, they'll usually have images for all of those products together nicely that you can grab and put into your site. That's a hack from one of our community members that actually shared that on, on a previous work session. But then you're basically just want to, going to want to go to this button. And then of course, the link to your wishlist is going to go right here, right? So just make sure that what you're doing here is you're adding images that are, you know, it could be something like morning routine. You could go to Canva, put some cute words in, says morning routine. And then of course, you could say, get all the products that I use to do blah, 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 blah. And then of course, you go in here and add your wishlist link, update that, and then of course, you save the page. And you can have all of your favorite Young Living products in one place. All right. Let me see if there are any, I know we've got a few more questions in the Q and A. And some good questions, do make sure that those are coming into the Q and A specifically, so we don't miss them in the chat. All right. So coming over here, have you noticed that you can only see a handful of wishlist at a time? When adding a product, I'm not sure what you mean by that. So in adding a product, though, oh, you're, you're talking about from the product page or from a search page probably. I recommend for simplicity's sake, being in your my account wishlist and actually using the search bar. Cause that's going to be a lot faster for you than just like, you know, going to different product pages and searching them on the Young Living website and adding them that way. Because yeah, you're right. If you are, maybe you're going to Young Living's search bar from their home. Because yeah, you're right. If you are, maybe you're going to Young Living's search bar from their homepage and you're typing in lemon. You know, it'll show up all of the things that have lemon. And if you hit the little heart icon, it does only show a couple of lists. So if you have a bunch of lists. I would definitely recommend that you take care of this over on the, uh, the, the my account part of your Young Living website. Okay, yeah, um, well, you need to be in the wishlist that you're creating to add it to the wishlist, so. Be like, go to wishlist, click the wishlist that you wanna add it to, then do the search bar and you're good. Like, you just add it straight to it and there's no problem. And this, I, what I'm describing is 100% something I did on the computer this morning, Alison. The center button, so, um, let's, I, I think I know what you're talking about here. Oh, quick, let's go take a quick look. Um, if we go here, the center button is right here. If your screen is smaller, you might not see it. The other alignment buttons you'll find are right here under more paragraph. So that's like where your right align would also be or justify align. If you're making pages for each wishlist and you have limited pages, this might not work for a lot of lists, correct? Yes, Margaret. What I would do here is use the my favorite things page and then kind of have categories. For the pages that you'll use. So let's go actually, and I'll, I'll show you what I mean by that. You, if you're only talking about Young Living on the page, which is a rule for, uh, for Young Living. You do, you don't wanna promote non-Young Living stuff on your Young Living, um, where you're mentioning Young Living. We'll go to create page. We'll go to my favorite things cuz it's a template now. And so what you would do and, and do watch our previous training on this, uh, from last week. But you could say routine one, two, three, four. You could have an unlimited number of sort of categories that you use on this page. You would just wanna duplicate the different sections and then use a section like this one to, um. To give people an opportunity to jump ahead to the section that they're interested in. So if this is wishlist one, right? If this is morning routine. You would have, you know, product image one, product image one, or product one description. Product image two, product two description. And then, of course, where you have these calls to action. The buttons would just all go off to the same wishlist, right? You can duplicate these sections, so you can add as many things as you want to, right? So if you have a bunch of products in a particular wishlist, then you can add them all here. And then, of course, move on to the second wishlist here in this next category. So you can actually get a lot of that done. On one page. Uh, and, and I would recommend it as well. Because if you're going to give people an opportunity to learn more about Young Living products and actually make an initial purchase. Why not give them more things that they could buy if they might be interested in it, right? If they're going because they're looking at something for their dog, but then they said, they see that they have stuff for their hormones. And they're like, oh, that's interesting. And then they read why you love it and why you don't live without it. They're gonna be more likely to wanna click that and add that to their cart too. So just put it all on the one page. And that, you know, keeps you from having to use tons and tons of pages. And in this case as well, um, I wouldn't necessarily use like the shortcut link because that does. Count against your number of pages if, if you're on one of the more limited plans. So what I would do in that case is, uh, is to just to use the actual links that you keep separate to your wishlist. And, uh, and then put them, of course, onto a page like the one I just showed you. And then, of course, reference. Maybe that my favorite things Young Living page. From your blog post. That can just be the link that you share from your blog post. Hey, you know, not all oils are created equal. Learn more about, you know, the this and that and the other. From, uh, you know, from this link and then you could send them over here. Oh, that reminds me, actually, I do wanna show you guys the, the why Young Living page. If you guys have not done this yet, highly recommend that you do. If you go over to your account settings. And you scroll down, you're going to see brand my business workshop. This is a complete step by step on how to create a fully customized website for your good oiling. That's gonna be branded to you, but it does integrate all of the great features that good oiling has for Young Living brand partners. And one of those, uh, is this page called why Young Living. And this is the template that you'll get. So let's view it here real quick. So of course, you're going to want to, you know, modify this to your liking. And the course does show you how to do that, how to make these changes. And these all go off to the different, uh, built-in themes from Get Oilin'. But you can also on this page, add more stuff. You know, you could have a call to action here that says, you know, get started now by, um, adding my favorite products to your cart. And then have that link go off to your wishlist. That would be a fantastic thing to add to a page like this one. Okay, let me get back to these questions. When you add or change things in your wishlist, you have to update the link or does it update automatically? Sherry, I believe, and this may be something to double check with Young Living, I don't see why it would change. Because I think what's happening when they're generating a unique link, it's a unique link for the list. So I would maybe test this out. Right? Uh, by creating a list and then, um. Obviously, logging out and looking at it, log back in, change the list, log out, use the same link and look at it again. So you could test that out pretty simply. Um, I don't see why, um, it would, it would need to, um, you would need to update anything. If you change the name of it potentially, but even that, I, I don't think is gonna be an issue. Cuz it's the list itself. If you delete the list, of course, you know, you're not gonna have it anymore. Or if you create a new version, you're gonna need to get a new link, uh, meaning starting over, create a new version. Okay, sometimes the search is a little weird. Um, if, if it's, if something isn't showing up where you feel like it's obvious, like RC. I would just backspace or refresh the page, Alison, and just put that back in. And, or try R period C period cuz sometimes it's the literal thing that you're looking for. Alright, how do we access the branding workshop you mentioned? Uh, that's gonna be under, uh, my account settings. And then you can just click there and it will add you to that vault, um, automatically. So you'll, you'll get an email and, uh, that'll get you all of the information you need to get access. And it is included, uh, with your get oiling membership, so you can only access it from in there. Alright, how does a wishlist link work for customers? Does it transfer to their login? So, um. It's a good question. I don't know exactly how this function works. Uh, I think that this is going to be. I mean, you, when you're logged in, you can see my wishlist and shared with me. So I think it's possible. You know, cuz I haven't had access to two accounts at the same time, two Young Living accounts at the same time to see exactly how that works. It is possible, I think, though, uh, for you to click someone else's wishlist link and be logged into your own. Young Living account and for that wishlist to show up. I don't see why that wouldn't work. You just, you can't see your own. The same way that, that someone who is a lead would see your own. So that, that's another thing worth testing. Alison says, I've just put the wishlist link right in the campaign, click here rather than create page. Is there a benefit to creating another page? And linking the page. So, um, if you're on basic plan and you've got a limited number of pages that you're using. If you are adding wishlist links to a campaign, um, I would recommend just. Adding the wishlist link to the campaign. Um, what I was showing you before was if you maybe have a wishlist that you anticipate sharing often. Right? So maybe you, you are the absolute pro. You've lived that life, you got, you know, diagnosed with some kind of a condition and you are managing it incredibly well. And there are these products that are making your life better and helping to support all the systems that you need support with. And there are people in your life who know that, who are like, what are you doing? And you could say, well, it's the products I use and I actually have a shopping list if you'd like access to it. And so in that case, if that's like your one, like you're gonna recommend that to everybody. Then that's when you would go and create that pretty link and just call it shopping list or something like that. And so then you could just go out into the world and say, it's mywebsite.com forward slash shopping list, right? And then, of course, they're going to get redirected to that wishlist link. And so you don't have to go and dig it up or tell them where to, you know, dig on your website to find it. So if you don't have a, like a purpose like that to fulfill. Then I, I wouldn't even bother with creating a pretty link. If it's going to be something that's going to just, you know, be deeply embedded into different places on your website, it doesn't need to have a dedicated page. It's really, if, if you know that you're gonna be sharing it a lot and maybe speaking the link out loud a lot, then that might be helpful to you. Rebecca is an AFT practitioner and you have a basic wishlist for AFT and some alternate oils. You also have AFT sessions in a coaching program. How would you set up the wish links in the AFT sessions? I don't have a page or website yet for AFT program. So, um, what I would do is definitely, if you don't have a page or website up yet. You are probably communicating via email, so I'd create some saved replies. And have that saved reply have a link to, um, that AFT wishlist. And you can literally call the saved reply AFT wishlist. And as I believe I've shown fairly recently before. You can create modular sections of emails and just literally call it the link. Here's another cheat code for you guys. Go to saved replies here, go to create. And this will be, uh, let me find. Alright, so this is going to be, I'll just call it morning routine. Uh, morning routine wishlist link. You could call this, uh, AFT wishlist link if you want to. Don't put a subject line in here cuz this is not gonna be a complete email. Head over here now to get my shopping list for your morning routine. Obviously, change this up for your AFT. Head over here now. I'm going to link this. And then I'm going to go find my morning routine. Link over here. Paste that in here, hit insert. And when we save this. Maybe you're just sending an email out to an AFT client. Oh, no, I'm not. I'm not in the right account. If I was in, uh, hold on just a second. It logged me out of Jane. It's weird. Okay, here we go. So when we go and repeat this real quick. Alright, we go back to our settings. I'll show you guys that one more time. So we're gonna go to create a. Uh, share morning routine wishlist is gonna be our saved reply. Click here to get your shopping list. Hyperlink click here. And then paste in your wishlist URL. Create saved reply. I cannot type today. There we go. Uh, so maybe this is your AFT client and you want to welcome them and get them started. So we're gonna send them an email and we're going to say, uh, looking forward. To our call and then, of course, any other information you're sharing here. But then I wanna make sure that I, that I add in that AFT wishlist. We can just pop it right in. So you can do this for all of your wishlist as well. You can also use these saved replies to populate your texts. So if you wanna text somebody, you can use them to drop into your, um. You can use them to drop into your blog posts. You can use them to, uh, build campaigns. There's so many things you can do with these saved replies, so use that. And that'll give you a shortcut as well without using up your allotment of pages in your account. Okay, I noticed the wishlist is in retail prices. How do you suggest a workaround? That's a good question. There's not really a workaround on Young Living's website per se. But it's all in how you share it and how you frame this, right? So make sure that where the point from which you are sharing. You say, go ahead and add these to your account. And when you create your, add them to your cart. When you create your account and check out, you're gonna get my awesome discount here. Here's how it's gonna work. And if you have questions, get in touch, right? This, that's why it's so important that you aren't just sending people straight off to the wishlist. Without some kind of context. This is why you don't use a wishlist in your link and bio, because they're not going to understand that there's a discount. If they go to a my favorite things page and you include the verbiage that says, hey, by the way, you're gonna be seeing retail prices. But when you do X, Y, or Z thing, you're going to get my discount and it's so awesome. Check this out, right? Yeah, the last thing that I showed there was the my favorite things template and that is just under your pages, uh, in your good oiling account. If you go to create a new page, it is there. It's called my favorite things and, and you can build that out, um, using that template. We do have a video from last week, uh, on our YouTube channel about that. Can I create a wishlist, copy the link right away, put it in the campaign and then add stuff to it? The link doesn't change. I am pretty positive that that is accurate, Alison, but I would. I would, I would test it out in your account just to be 100% sure. I don't see a reason why if an affiliate link is created. The bones of it are the same. You're adding more details to it. I think you should absolutely, you know, think about it like this. Amazon has, has wishlist, right? And when you add a new item to your Amazon wishlist, it doesn't change the URL for your wishlist, right? It's still this, you know, wishlist A. So if wishlist A grows by five or, you know, decreases by seven, the URL is gonna stay the same. I can't imagine this not working the same way. But, um, but definitely give, give it a, give it a try, check it out. We aren't, uh, complete experts in the Young Living, uh, platform, how their tech works, but we can't help you translate how to make it work here. For the makeup routine, if you add all the colors, it's a lot, eh, yeah. So I would just add the stuff that you use. Uh, and then, of course, wherever you're sharing, cuz I noticed that when I was making that one as well. Uh, is, you know, you can't just go to Savvy Minerals Concealer or something like that and just say, pick your shade. You gotta pick a shade, uh, which is not gonna be right for everybody. So what you would wanna do there is, um, very specifically where you're sharing that. Have a little note that says, you know, if you want help, uh, selecting your shades, uh, you know, remember to, you know, use the shade selector. Cuz there, there's the thing, you know, Young Living has that. Um, you know, just be sure that you're adding context. Don't ever expect, if you're gonna send people to a link, don't ever expect that they're going to infer. Everything that needs to be inferred. Set them up with the information that they need to know before they go there and things will work out better. So if we say, you know, here's my link, if you wanna get all these products. By the way, these are my shades. Make sure you do some, some exploring and adjust for your own. If you have questions, just hit reply to this email, that kind of thing. And that's gonna set you up for greater success where that's concerned. And I would absolutely not add all the colors. No, 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 no. Just add, add one. And then tell them, make sure you pick your shade, right? Because I don't think anybody is going to a page that's selling concealer. And then just buying whatever is in their cart. Because, I mean, there's, that's not how technology works. We don't know your skin tone. Alright, I'd like to set up something for my AFT program, either a landing page or a website. Where would the benefits of each be covered so I can decide what I want? Uh, Rebecca, you, you want, you want a website. Uh, you, you want a page. Because that's going to give you a lot more space to talk about what it is that you're offering. So a landing page is a really cool thing that you can use, uh, especially in get oiling in some really interesting ways. You could put it over top of a website, uh, you know, you can require people to opt into something like this before they can visit your website. There's lots of cool things that you can do with them. But in terms of their style and their design, they're relatively limited for selling something. And also critically, you don't take payments from landing pages. So if you want to sell AFT sessions or packages, you're going to need to use a feature in our system. That, uh, that, that has payments enabled. So these are really great for, for generating leads. Uh, and, you know, and, and then also, especially if you're doing something like vendor events. These are spectacular for vendor events. Where you need something that's just really simple, all the options you need on the page are put in your name and email and click the button, right? So that's landing pages. What you want is a page. And on that page. You can, here, I'll go to create page here. Uh, maybe this one. I actually think this one's a really great page for selling something, right? So, uh, we can go here and say, here's what AFT can do for you. Schedule a session or learn more or something like that. And this could be an image of you or whatever. And then, of course, it's where we can kind of break down more of like what AFT can do for you and da, 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 da. And so this guy right here is where we're giving a call to action as well as up here at the top. Maybe they wanna purchase a bundle. Maybe they wanna purchase some sessions, a package, something like that. We can take payments here. You do have to connect a payment processor. But you can actually, uh, collect payments for packages or for, uh, one-off sessions. What I would actually recommend that you do, um, Rebecca, if you haven't done this already. Our sister platform Attract Well goes into a lot of detail on how to do specifically this kind of thing. So for people who are coaches and consultants, if you go to youtube.com forward slash attract well. You're going to find, um, like sales pages, new client onboard. new client onboarding, selling services, things like that. But we don't really get into quite as much on the Get Oiling platform. Because we do want to honor that there are a lot of people here who are really just about growing Young Living. You can do more than just Young Living with Get Oiling. You can, you know, of course, be an AFT practitioner, coach, a blogger, a course creator, all kinds of amazing things. But we, you know, want to honor the time of the folks who are very Young Living focused on this particular channel. So if you want more content like that and more how-tos and templates and things like that, definitely recommend that you check out Attract Well, because that's going to have more of the in-depth information on setting up programs and doing the Young Living adjacent things that you could be doing on your good oiling site. But know that when you go over there and you, you know, get access to all of our training and everything that we have on Attract Well, you don't need to leave Get Oiling. We are still a fantastic home for your Young Living business. You're just going to get more of the training. It's the exact same platform. It's just for not Oilers, basically. Alright, do we have any other questions before we get going? I'm excited to see what you guys do with this. Who has been creating wish lists, like since we've been on the call today, who's like multitasking and creating wish lists while we're doing this? I know a couple of you guys are doing that. Yep. What are you, what are you going to do with your first wishlist? Tell us in the chat, are you, are you going to use it for a challenge? For those of you who have maybe had like a 28-day challenge vault, I know we did a training on that ages ago. This is a great way to get people to add all the products that they need to their card at once for a challenge, right? You could maybe start thinking about first of the year challenges and things that you can be promoting. I know it's October right now at the time we're filming this, but New Year's resolutions will be a thing before you know it. You could be planning and getting ready for those things that you'll be promoting at the first of the year. So maybe you put together a sleek bundle or your favorite. You know, your favorite weight management products and, you know, stuff like that. And you can actually put those into bundles and have those ready, start building up a you know, some kind of a healthy challenge for the first of the year, whatever that might be. Anyway, well, excited for you guys. We will be back here same time next week. Let me see. Oh, okay. We're just got a flood of new questions or new, new things in the chat. Okay, thank you, guys. We're really, really excited that you liked this and that we hope to see you do great things with it. We will be back same time next week, noon Eastern next Thursday. If you have requests, there are things you want to learn how to do stuff you'd like to see on our YouTube channel and on these live calls, let us know. We'll create a training for you and we look forward to seeing you on a future live edition of the work session. Take care, you guys.